Is we go ahead and start, uh, Ms. Kara, she will go over the budget amendments and the budget amendments start on page twenty.
Okay. Uh, please, um, just tell me here, we have more budget amendments, just if there's any salary or benefits. Lot of them, that can all be overspent. So most of these amendments have to do with salary and benefit lineups, just say that, so they're not overspent. Um, amendment number seventeen is these spend budgets. Um, so most of these are just moving money around within those two budgets to cover the lineups that are overspent or some that might have extra money in lineups too now. So there's no impact on the fund balance here. On seventeen, this is just moving money to where it needs to go.
Even even though eighty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money to move.
Yes, it is. Um, that that lineup is actually like the physical therapy with Travis Mann. Um, so it's it's really been a heavy lineup and that was happening around one of those.
It's also, if you don't mind me speaking for the chairman, it's a.
You guys have any questions on that one?
Mr. Bornt is coming up to, uh, talk about that.
We last year, right before school started, we lost a speech pathologist as well, and we had to contract that service. Uh, we didn't get any applicants, obviously, and I'm looking for one right now, you know, one, but anyway. So in that line item, that's where that salary and benefits went to the contract.
Okay.
For the speech, that was a big chunk of it.
Thank you, Mr. Bornt. Okay, Ms. Kara.
Okay, amendment number eighteen, this is our safety grant. So just at the beginning of budget season for this year, we didn't know how this safety grant was going to be spent. So this is just moving that expense to the credit line item. So it wasn't other students before and we're just moving it to, um, maintenance where Carl is spending on like windows and cameras. I think so we're just moving that money to where, you know, this expense is going to come out of.
Anybody have questions on that? Okay.
Okay, amendment nineteen, um, this is the same thing as the sped budget. This is operations, maintenance, and transportation put together. Um, this is just moving money around to some, you know, where the lineups have maybe been over or increases in those expenses. So we've moved money from those that need to spend as much to cover that one that year. Um, there is, um, has an impact on the fund balance, we're just moving money around to cover. You guys have any questions on that one?
Any questions on that? Any questions on that?
None.
Okay.
Okay, amendment twenty, um, this is to accept the insurance recovery where the damage was at a little mystery, um, lining down the lead. So we're just putting, um, that revenue in and then showing the expense in that lineup where we'll be paying everything out of.
So is that just a ward, we're spending what we're doing?
Yeah, it's just a ward. I think some of these expenses will go over, but we're on tax money to cover.
Okay.
Okay, amendment number twenty-one, this is our community service grant, um, after school, work to school, um, family support there. So we're just, um, basically cleaning these items up where at the beginning of the year, we just put in a, um, a budget that we think it might be. And so these are just turning those numbers up to what those budgets actually look like and what those grants actually look like. So we actually got thirty thousand more than what we had in the budget originally. So that's just what we're doing here, what twenty-one.
It's always a good thing.
Yeah, any questions on that one?
Don't think so.
Okay, um, amendment number twenty-two, this is where both of our salary and benefits lineups, um, have been over, so we're just moving money around in each, in each function to cover, um. So, like this first one, this seventy-two, one, one, oh, we're just moving money around in that function to cover what needs to be because we can't go over and salary a lot of that at all. Um, and that's what all of them are. Got so many questions on that one?
What is the library, librarians on there? Twenty thousand dollars on library, uh, what, you didn't have a library?
Um, for libraries, spending, um, so we can have one library and now that we got one, we have one, three top librarians and now we're just helping with the library. Charlie might know, uh, that we're.
It's gonna be on page twenty-one.
The seventy-two, two-ten librarians, decrease.
So we just pushed that one out of the library lineup because we only have one and normally we have more than that. And now the, um, children or assistants are getting paid out of the one eighty balance, others are waiting.
Right.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we moved it from the line, I thought she meant she was short in the library line, yes. She moved it to cover where we had just listed.
Any other questions on that one? Or that amendment?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, amendment number twenty-three is just a place for the quarterback club, architects, staff, um, you guys, a great thing for. I'm just moving money out of, um, that we can use money in to cover those. Any questions on that one?
And that was for the, uh, top graphical survey, correct, or was that for ASA?
Um, this is the quarterback building, so this is the one that's, um.
Oh, that's for the drawings, for the.
Engineer drawings.
The drawings, yeah, so we did such a difference, yeah.
So we we need to paint all those engineer drawings?
Yes.
We're good with that one?
Yes.
Okay, you want me to talk about the federal budget amendments now, or are we ready for that?
Uh, no, I think if, uh, board members are good, we'll go ahead with that. This was a discussion that we had last month about not, uh, the board not approving the amendments on the federal level or on the federal budget. If you'll explain to them, why don't you explain to me, I think they'll be good like I am.
Okay, in the April board meeting, um, brought forward, you guys, but the auditor said that it should be like those fifteen amendments that you guys are doing with the procedure that you currently have of not approving federal budget amendments. Now, the supervisors, normally, if they have any changes, they go into Eplan, the state website, and make these federal budget amendments. Then I approve that, the department approves that, and then the state approves that. Normally, you guys do not approve any federal budget amendments. So the auditor just wanted you guys to know and make sure that you're aware that that is no paper procedure.
I think bottom line is that she would be pregnant and then Ms. Department would be pregnant before it's done.
And then the state would approve it as well.
Yes, and then she would bring the report to us at next meeting.
Yes, and I can start writing the reports to you guys.
But we did a report on all the.
And you would bring that report or send it to us, correct?
Yes, I could, I could just start putting them in the board, the board package with the general purpose funds and everything like that.
Because in the past, you hadn't put those in there, and that's what the auditor had suggested, just to make sure that we know y'all are doing that and we're okay with that. So what we're saying here tonight is just we're, we're okay with you doing that, but we would like to see the final product.
Okay, sounds good, I'll talk to you now.
Does anyone have any question on those? She sent this out, I don't know if this is in the bank or not, but it is.
It is.
Is it in this, Ms.?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, okay. Turn the page.
The summer school, now the, the federal report is actually on page twenty-seven. The twenty-four, that is the summer school, I did review.
Oh, okay.
Page twenty-three, that's what, kind of just an overview of those federal budget amendments that's in place in the, in the base hole. And then if you take the back, you got kind of thirty, on page twenty-seven is just the federal report. Federal is five, the other ones that you guys are used to seeing, they're just, each page is a different version.
So, so like this page twenty-three, that's what you would put in there on a monthly basis for the amendments that have been made?
I can do that if you want, yes.
Is that what you were suggesting, is that the doc what you were suggesting, or was it, was the document on page twenty-seven, which?
I, I was suggesting the reports that are made on page twenty-seven. You'll actually see, like in that column, those amendments, you would see those amendments there as well. I just created this one that's on page twenty-three as I.
I think it would be good for you to give both, that way you could glance over it, and then if they had a question that was in more detail, they could go to the other report.
Okay, I can do that, that's not a problem. You have any other questions on that?
I'm good. Don't think so.
Okay.
I think that's good, I don't think you have any other amendments to discuss, you know, the other thing is monthly and quarterly, correct?
So we don't have quarterly, just topics monthly, the only other thing I have for you guys to review and refer to is this summer camp budget, which is the summer school, that's the, and that's the, so, um, down there.
Okay. So we have about ten minutes, if you want to talk about that, uh, summer school budget. Page twenty-four, is that right?
Yeah. Okay. You'll be on page twenty-four, hundred twenty-six. Um, page twenty-four would be our summer learning camp, which is A through four. And, um, basically, we just have this allocated, split up between the teacher, um, educational assistants, and the principal, the next supply, the benefit lineups.
This money is pushed down by the state for us to run summer schools, so it's not coming out of our true budget.
Yes, they are, right. So this should just be a logical, we will spend the expenditures and then we will request for reimbursement. On page twenty-five, this is the bridge camp, which is the middle school, so this is probably six graders, six and seven. And this is just one of the nine wide of the, the teachers, the principal, secretary, and supplies. And then page twenty-six is just starting any camps that is just, um, this is like a support another day where they get to do fun activities and the state provides this money to do that. You guys have any questions on those?
I don't think so, Ms. Kara. I'll go ahead and call this meeting, uh, apologize for being late, trying to get things lined up. Our, uh, technology department has been in conference, and I appreciate Miss Jennifer for getting back to line and getting some things to us, up for us, I appreciate, uh, Bledsoe Telethon Fiber for, uh, their live streaming on their YouTube, and, um, Miss Jennifer has a link on our website to that. Uh, we also have some folks tonight who are zooming, and she has that on the screen behind us so we can see them, and hopefully we'll be able to hear them when we get to that one. Uh, it is Bledsoe County Board of Education meeting in regular session on June second, two thousand twenty-two at six P M, or thereabouts, at Bledsoe County Middle School. Ms. Rollson, would you call the role play?
Mr. Willensley?
Here.
Mr. Boring?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mrs. Oates?
Here.
Mr. Reese? Mr. Snod?
Here.
Sees present, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, first one on the agenda, don't have, uh, any new business to add, so it can be as is. I'm making motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Bill.
I'll second.
Former. Further discussion on the agenda. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Out of number two on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the May second, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting, Bledsoe County Board of Education. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to look at those. I've looked over those, there's only one change from the draft that, uh, Ms. Rollson sent out and the one that she has in the book that's going into the book, I think, correct. It just moved the number sixteen, uh, budget amendment up to number four, it was under number five, and she moved it up to number four, along with the other amendment. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
She goes out. Ms. Farmer, thank you. Any questions, discussions on the minutes from May second? Call the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Out of number three, request by Ms. Kara Walling, Finance Director, to approve monthly financial reports for the month ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-two. And in the book, it's again on page six, hopefully we've had an opportunity to look at those. Does anyone have any questions or anything stands out? Ms. Kara, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Barely, I can barely hear you as well. Ms. Jennifer, what can I do about that?
I'll hear my phone.
Okay. All right, nice for that, didn't I? Uh, any questions for Ms. Kara on the, uh, budget amendment, or the financial, I'm sorry. Ms. Kara, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, this is just our one thing, um, they will report for VTE, that period of spending.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Have a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Further questions, discussions on the monthly financials ending April thirty? Ms. Rollson, would you call the role play?
Mr. Willensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snod?
Yes.
Sees present.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson, motion carries. Out of number four, request by Ms. Kara Walling, Finance Director, for approval of budget amendments. And we need to discuss those in the, uh, same session as on page twenty to begin. Are there any other questions on those?
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bill.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Have a motion in a second to approve the budget amendments. Any questions? Ms. Rollson, call the role play.
Mr. Willensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snod?
Yes.
Sees present, Ms. Kara.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson, motion carries. Out of number five, request by Ms. Kara Walling, Finance Director, for approval of summer camp budgets. And, uh, Ms. Kara, I talked about those briefly here in our planning session. Uh, pages twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, I believe, in the.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, thank you, Ms. Farmer. Ms. Snow.
We talked a little bit about funding source, where the money's coming from, the participants this summer, that kind of thing. One more.
Yes, Ms. Kara, did you hear the question, uh, may I speak to your mic?
Oh, is there a microphone?
Can we say briefly the funding source, where it's coming from, and how the money's being spent this summer?
Okay, so these are grants pushed down from the state just to fund this, um, summer school. So, um, we just spend these expenditures during summer and then we request for reimbursement. So everything that we spend will be reimbursed on these grants. And it's the expenses solely committed from the teachers, the educational assistants, um, and supplies.
Thank you.
Ms. Farmer, did you hear when she went over those as far as things group?
I was, I just wanted a little detail to share with those that are here this evening as well as, uh, listening by video.
Any other questions? Discussion, Ms. Rollson, would you call the role play?
Mr. Willensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snod?
Yes.
Sees present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson, motion carries. I was just about to ask her to cover those again, Ms. Farmer, that's all.
Yeah, well.
Out of number six, on the agenda discussion and or approval of federal projects, amendments, and reports. And I think Ms. Kara covered that, discuss that briefly, if you would, uh, overview that again for us as to what you could give us at the end of the month if we, uh, choose to, uh, let supervisors and the finance director and the, uh, director of schools to approve those, and then bring us the report.
So the auditor dismissed the recommendation or just knows that, um, they need to be documented in thirty-four minutes that you guys were okay with not approving federal budget amendments. So we discussed in the work session that you guys are approving the documents, approving federal budget amendments, but that you would not consider these amendments laid out since you've answered one of our questions.
One thing, Ms. Walling, Kara, was that if we were to ask her to bring all of those to us for approval before the amendments were made, then it would slow the process down to thirty days, if we're correct, up to thirty days. If everyone would do okay with, um.
Do we have a motion to say as such, Mr. Chairman?
I think, I think that would be, uh, correct, yes.
I make a motion that we are okay with the procedure as they are now, but she'll provide us a monthly summary of those amendments. And the need to. And the need to edit it, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Any further discussion or questions on this, uh, federal project amendments? Ms. Rollson, would you call the role play?
Mr. Willensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snod?
Yes.
Sees present.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson, motion carries. Out of number seven, request by Mr. Mark Austin, Grant Manager, for the approval of the revisions to S R one, S R two, and S R three budget. All right, there's only requests for, uh, changes to S R two and S R three. Um, is she in the package, you should see, uh, slide label, S R two proposed budget changes for June two thousand twenty-two. It'll be at the very end of the, uh, the S R pages.
Someplace forty-eight.
Forty-eight. On here, uh, we're removing the sound amplification system from the budget and moving those funds to additional nursing hours.
We just won't be using those amplification systems, but.
That's correct. I don't have any, any more questions on that, and, uh, S R budget three is, uh, we're gonna be adding a, a sped teacher to the budget, and we'll be removing, uh, part of the S R supervisor, uh, budget from a full F T E to a half F T E. So we'll be moving, um, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to the sped, uh, for a sped teacher.
I hope this can be approved at once. I make a motion, we, um, approved the proposed budget changes to S R two and S R three adjustments.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. So on S R one, is that almost finished? Yes, if you look at, uh, the pages on S R one, you can see, um, the detail on there that we've got, uh, five hundred dollars left in that budget. Uh, and it's for, uh, we're still anticipating some disposal of contaminated supplies. And that should finish off that budget. To either use that or lose it, is that what you want? Oh, use it or lose it, and if for some reason that doesn't happen, it's easy enough to move that five hundred dollars to indirect cost and. Okay. That's exactly. Any other questions, Ms. Rollson? Ms. Rollson, would you call the role play?
Mr. Willensley?
Yes.
Mr. Boring?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snod?
Yes.
Sees present, Mr. Chairman.
Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Kara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollson. Out of number eight, approval of M O U for volunteer behavioral health project basic. Uh, Ms. Church has reviewed this contract, and I assume to speak to that as well.
I have, this is, uh, I believe the third or the fourth contract that we have with volunteer behavioral. This is for project basic, which is an early intervention program for grades kindergarten through the third grade. Volunteer behavioral has now captured all of the amendments and objections that I've had in previous contracts, and they've incorporated them into this contract, which is good, it makes my job much easier. The only objection I have in this contract, I always believe it's better for the board to have eyes on the contract on an annual basis, this does not provide for a period that the contract's in effect. It just contemplates that sometime either party can give thirty days notice and the contract will be terminated. My suggestion would be, and that's on page sixty-one, subparagraph B, uh, that would simply include language in there that limits the term of the contract to a one-year period subject to renewal by mutual agreement, uh, more than thirty days prior to the expiration. On the other contracts, volunteer behavioral says no objection to including that language.
Ms. Range, I think there's some folks on the Zoom that could, uh, if they can hear us. I'm not sure which one of these ladies that would be, I see Ms. Amy Jordan.
Ms. Kirby? Hi, I'm, um, heard most of what you said without asking what the question was.
Is that directed to me?
Yes.
If it wasn't a question, I, I simply, I'm suggesting to the board that the term of the agreement be for a one-year period. It can be renewed by mutual agreement, uh, more than thirty days prior to the expiration for an additional one-year period. We could leave the provision in there that allows either party to terminate upon thirty days' notice. Uh, I think it's best for the board to review all their contracts on an annual basis. And the other contracts we have with you provide for that.
Can you hear her?
Yes, she said, gotcha.
Okay, so she did that.
She did, that's brilliant, suggestion.
I thought that's exactly what she said, we should.
Do you have any questions for the other home here? We've had this position in the past, and when the person left, COVID hit, so they just never replaced them, so they're just ready to replace them. And they will be at the mountain schools. This one position will be based between the mountain schools.
And this covers what age group you're doing?
Uh, kindergarten through third is the focus, but they will cover the whole entire school, but their focus is K through three.
I would make a motion to approve that with the recommendation Ms. Church added there, uh, term of one year and can renew it. Uh, within a, within agreement in thirty days at the end of that particular year.
Yes.
And it could be terminated at six or seven of.
They have, they have thirty days, that's fine, for it to stay in.
I'll second.
Mr. Mr. Farmer? Any further discussion or questions, comments? Mr. Farmer, would you call over, please?
Mr. Willansley?
Yes.
Mr. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Jordan, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Upchurch, for reviewing that again. Item number nine on the agenda approval of bid for replacement of ten gas fuel units at Ledge County Middle School. Did you get those into there, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir. I think, Ms. Charlene, put them in your package. Should have been bids.
Probably sixty. Oh, it was not number nine.
Sixty-four, and then you'll, you'll go past the...
Guess we had three companies that bid on the project. Uh, Action Heaton Coon was the low bid. We expect die-in or train units. I was hoping they would go with one brand for all, but they're sort of going to mix and match. But with them being fourteen thousand dollars cheaper, I don't know that it's worth the extra money to try to get one single brand. It helps us on servicing units if it is, but, uh, but with that being that much cheaper, we, uh, I'd recommend going with a low bid with them.
Did they get with you before they bid?
Yeah, and we spent die-in or train. I just thought they would do one or the other, but they sort of said they were going to be half and half. You know, half train, half die-in, or they're going to be mixed and matched. But like I said, with the price, if it was a little bit closer, I'd recommend maybe sticking with one brand, but since it's a pretty good price difference, I would say. And this will be used, uh, the T B A grant that we received for the middle school, the funds will be coming out of this grant for this project, so...
I'm just using your words here. Any alternate brand must be approved prior to bid open.
Yeah, but I think I listed die-in, die-in and train both.
You listed them both?
Yeah, I listed them both in the business.
Spent years.
Yeah, the spec is die-in or train, or if you do any other, yeah, but, uh, like I said, I figured they would go one or the other, but to me, it's not a significant enough difference, you know, to warrant not going with our bid.
So you're there.
Are either one of them cheaper than the other one?
Uh, apparently, some of them are cheaper on some, and some are cheaper on others. That's probably why they're going with different ones. We have, we have been replacing the ones with die-in up here now. This is a brand we've been using. Uh, it just helps us service in parts. I mean, not that we can't get parts for others, but, uh, it just helps us keep more things in stock. But again, like I said, I think with the price difference, we could go ahead and recommend going with Action, uh, on that bid.
They're saying they're going to go down.
They didn't list which one was going to be weak, so I don't know which one.
They're still negotiating with suppliers.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one's most beneficial to them?
Yeah.
Now that got paid, they're going to be like, "All right."
Yeah, okay. Both are reputable brands, so I don't have a problem with these brands. I just wish we should stay, I would say, but I'll make sure we do that in Spain next time, so...
I make a motion. What about, maybe, are you going to say about?
Yes.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
I'll say.
Mr. Jordan? Any discussion or questions on this? Mr. Austin, would you call over, please?
Mr. Willansley?
Yes.
Mr. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Item number ten, approval of bid for five twenty-four thousand D U units split heat pump.
And that'll be also go to sixty-five, that'll be the next page.
What was it for page sixty-five?
You'll, you'll plan.
There it is. So that price is, uh...
Yes, yes, that's total for all five, yes.
So I noticed that that was just for units. Do we need all those or do we begin?
No, it, it's labor, equipment, and material all included. That's all included, yeah.
I didn't see that in the draft, that's why.
Yeah, it was, uh, included installation for all.
Okay.
Good to different to her list, too.
But you recommended the, uh...
The low bids, yeah.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, I verified both bids and both bids bid identical equipment, everything like, so I recommend the low bid.
I make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
I'll say.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion, then, uh, for zip? Mr. Austin, call over, please?
Mr. Willansley?
Yes.
Mr. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Turner. And it's natural, you're two.
I'm just waiting.
Item six, renewal of waste management services contract. Uh, if you'll notice today, I believe it was today you sent those out, those two, they're not contracts. First aid.
It should be in your book, starting on page sixty-six. Page six, after, the page after page sixty-seven, Ms. Carey put a comparison together. They didn't see silk sanitation and toilet waste, the dymatite. It'll be after page sixty-seven, this is in it, so you're allowed to check.
Could you call my team, too, to...
Yes. When we, uh, started, uh, if everyone knew around, Mr. Jack retired and sold his business, P W S. We, he sold business, then we entered into a contract with them. They were, obviously, we worked out a contract. Mr. Upchurch sent them a new contract and they signed that contract for thirty-one hundred dollars for that. Uh, here recently, they've increased their pricing and had fuel surcharges and they didn't notify us. So they, they had those in there. We've currently not paid anything, but the thirty-one hundred was in the contract. But, uh, they recently told me they were raising their price and, uh, was going to, uh, they sent the contract. If you can read that email, Ms. Charlene said that was going to be the terms of the contract they were going to send out. As Ms. Charlene said, I don't think it's an actual contract, but it was just the terms of it. But after dealing with them, I reached out to self sanitation and got a quote from them. Uh, it would be my recommendation, go with self sanitation. We've had some issues with P W S and, uh, in the past, so I, 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 I think we would move forward. Mr. Upchurch did put our current contract, the thirty-day cancellation on both sides, so if you guys want to go with self sanitation, I'll notify P W S tomorrow. We'll be moving to a different company.
Do we have terms of self sanitation agreement in comparison to the proposed terms for P W S?
They said no contract would be required, but I would prefer some contract draw, draw up again with the...
I would like Mr. Upchurch to address that again, I think, so to discuss that issue months ago.
Because the term, I mean, the tipping fees and everything else is going up across the board everywhere.
Yeah.
Plus, not, and I didn't count the fuel surcharges.
And, and that was my argument with P W S. The fuel sur, I understand the fuel surcharges. We're paying decent more, too, but to not notify us and just send the bill on expectation to be paid without notification was, I, I didn't appreciate that part.
Presumably.
Yeah.
Well, plus, when you have contract, it's a contract. You might just eat whatever those prices go to until you can bid again. You should expect to pay for it.
I agree with you, Mr. Farmer. I'd like to get a call in tonight, matter of fact.
Yeah.
I'm the one vote on this.
I don't want, I don't want anyone around me who want to make that call, because I...
Mr. Upchurch, uh, to discuss, uh, what we've done.
First of all, we've got a right, absolute right to cancel an existing contract. I think we've got a right to cancel without thirty days' notice. They breached the contract. They materially breached the contract, uh, unilaterally breached it with their, with their actions. But the self sanitation contract is much more favorable, proposal is much more favorable to us. Primarily because they contemplated this agreement only a twelve-month range. And again, I always like a twelve-month contract for this to continuously monitor what our vendors are doing as much as possible. So that, that's very favorable and they're, they're firm on what their charges are. They have a actual mechanism in place on fuel sur, fuel surcharges, and I, I, I appreciate that as well. So that would be my recommendation also that we contract with them. I'd like to draft a contract that will be similar to the existing contract we have with priority waste, uh, with the terms that they proposed here, subject to the board's approval.
And so their pricing can be for months.
Yep.
And I did speak to them. If you do choose to go that way, they have a, we need fourteen containers total. I think they have eleven on site now, which would be okay to get us through the summer, because we don't need every container at every school for the summer. But he would have to get them by the time school started, he told me.
So does that, does Silk have any, uh, proposed, any of the terms that were in the email that we received today from P W S?
No, but yeah.
We don't anticipate that going, do you?
No, in, in fact, I think, Mr. Upchurch, seeing that, that they said no contract required. Again, I, I feel like we need to have one, but they, they were, they were just saying if we would just agree to twelve months, that we, they would agree to those terms for twelve months without a contract, so...
Okay.
Is that paid, you know?
I think it was at the end of the quote, self sanitation, it just said no contract required.
There was, there was another email that it was in.
It's in page two, managers signing up for self sanitation.
And as I explained, the P W S, Mr. Upchurch, was, I mean, you said it's a hundred-year contract. We still have to approve it every year at the board meeting. They did not want anything to, they said they wouldn't take anything less than three-year contract unless the last one would work for them, so...
I dealt with them, Mr. Smith, Richard Smith sold his, uh, business to them. So I've had, I've had some previous deals, but...
Yeah, and I let everybody know some of the budgets, Ms. Carey, do you view? I mean, I think Mr. Jack was around twenty-one to twenty-three hundred less. You can see what the new prices are now, so we've had a significant increase in that. That's a lot of the costs that are rising in, uh, some of that operation line items that you see.
So do we need to approve this and that, Mr. Chairman, or wait until Mr. Upchurch?
I think we've been approved tonight and include Mr. Upchurch's raw contracts, including these.
Before he comes to P W S, does he need to make sure they accept that contract? I know it's not the same idea.
They, they're, they're saying they don't have, have, have a contract. They'll bring the dumpsters on down and do it for that price right now, so... Just the contract will help protect us for the year that Mr. Upchurch drafts that we can get that pricing for the entire year.
We have, I think this runs out June thirtieth, correct?
I had run, I, we ran out at April thirtieth, but Mr. Upchurch gladly put in there that as long as both parties were happy with the, using the agreement, it continued on. They never notified us of any difference until we got an invoice of the price change. That was the first notification we got that anything had changed.
So they, they increased the price in the month of May when they felt like that the contract was not...
I think they added the fuel surcharges on before, May. And, and again, I understand fuel, if they would have called and told us, we understand fuel went up and they're, but they still were outside the contract.
She's got a bill, Mr. Farmer. It's like, we paid a bill, not realizing that there were fuel upcharges in it.
And then they raised the rates the next month and had the fuel surcharges.
That was a good catch, by the way, Ms. Carey, by the way.
So the, the motion would be to accept Silk Sanitation's proposed services as listed in their agreement subject upon the contract drafted by Mr. Upchurch.
Yes, and if we have these provisions, uh, that would be my...
That's my motion.
Have you mentioned them?
I'll say.
Mr. Upchurch, do we need to do anything to terminate the contract with P W S or just notify?
Just notify. You will get sent a word or two.
Please.
Mr. Brady, if you want to say?
I'll speak.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, and I will be here. Self sanitation contract? Mr. Austin, would you call over, please?
Mr. Willansley?
Yes.
Mr. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Motion carries. So we're probably going to see those lime, green, or light green containers everywhere.
Yeah, they're a little bit brighter.
Item number twelve on the agenda acceptance of funding agreement for T V A grants.
I think Ms. Charlene included the funding agreement from, uh, T V A in your packet. This is part of the bids we just approved. Again, we'd be putting this, if you look at the funding agreement, uh, if you remember how we done the other grants, this grant is just a little bit different with T V A. They have asked for twenty thousand dollars to be allotted to spend on something that the staff and students vote on that are wanted. This money has to be spent by September twenty-twenty-three, uh, but obviously, if we can get approval on B S to start some of these other, uh, projects, we would make sure and get them done in this budget year. So they went ahead and drafted us a funding agreement, uh, for the, uh, H V A C equipment you just approved and then the control system, uh, that we're going to be installing into the middle school also. So those will be the two projects that we should be able to complete, uh, under this funding agreement.
What, uh, what do you have in mind?
The ten units you just, uh, passed on the bid will be under that, and then, uh, and then there'll be a whole new control system put in. We are no longer contracting Schneider Lecker, who we went into an interim with. We have pipe oil entry, the wheeler, and, uh, the high school on this new control system. So rigs being in the middle school, the only two that's left, so we'll be installing a new control system here. The teachers will be able to control the H V A C equipment and their thermostat from their phone. Uh, so if Mr. Borin gets hot, he can turn his thermostat down here if he chooses to, but it'll let people have more access, uh, to it. And it's a web-based system. The current system we have now is a server-based system. So right now, the only one that can change people's areas is me, when they call me, but now we'll have access with everyone. Uh, the building level administrators, uh, they'll have a lot more people access, so...
Let me just tell you, that might be a great way to retain teachers.
Uh, the systems have worked great. We just finished pipe oil entries today, so, uh, and we, wheelers and, I know the high school, we've seen huge energy savings up there, and I contribute a lot of it to the cooling tower and to that new control system, so...
So those new units are part of the learning environment improvement, correct?
Yes. No, no, I'm sorry. The learning environment improvement portion is what the students are voting on. That's the...
We don't know.
We don't, no, well, we were actually ready to take a vote, and T V A asked us to wait till, we was going to take a vote for the students' list this year, but they asked to wait till the students come back and file and take the vote on whatever project they decide to do, so...
So twenty thousand of, well, a minimum of twenty thousand.
It's what it states in there, a minimum of twenty thousand.
What's the, what's the intent, do you think? Is it going to be twenty, or what do you think?
Well, uh, the few of the things the teachers suggested, there was a lot, but one of them that got a lot of traction was an outdoor fitness equipment. Uh, those pieces are fairly expensive. They're a little more than twenty. But if the P T O might want to partner with us to do something, or if the board would want to do some sort of magic to help do that if it does go over, we're trying to limit it to that amount, but, uh, but again, if it goes over, we're not just going to say no. We're going to give you guys the option. If it's something that we can partner with to do, it's something we could try to do.
Do we have until September next year to...
September of twenty-twenty-three, so again, not September this, kind of the following year to, to get all this completed. But hopefully, we'll get all the energy upgrades done, uh, here in the next year, and then we'll just have to do the learning environment upgrade last.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? Any further questions, discussion? On the funding group, T V A grant? Mr. Austin, would you call over, please?
Mr. Willansley?
Yes.
Mr. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Motion carries.
I'll do.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
I'll say.
Item number thirteen, approval of contract with lean frog for compensation state. I think there's some pages in there.
So, Ms. Charlene, you can jump in, too, on this, but, um, I think this is going to target some of the, the needs that were brought up during my interview as to us looking at compensation for many of the jobs that we have within the district. Do you want to add anything to that?
And also, we're hoping that out of this study that we will get a super principal on a principal actual pay scale, uh, maybe separated from the teacher's level, it's probably on now, and sort of incorporate some of those, for show, like these, um, supplements, maybe just sort of incorporate that all into an actual scale and have a scale of difference if it came to teachers, a super principal, principal, supervisor, and just have it all worked out.
So, for example, Mr. Mosley and I were interviewing assistant principals for the high school today, and one of them said, "What is the pay rate like?" It's very hard to explain that when you have very, when there's a lot of different moving pieces within a salary. Most people are looking at, "This is my base salary. I can move up instead of each year," um, but right now, we don't have that.
There's two pieces of that, right? Or two different?
Well, what we have, what I gave you, I gave you a copy of both of the things I requested from them. I requested a proposal for them to do for the, the one that's the, the district line, you know, for the teachers. And then the one that was listed in the office. That's the, the cheaper price one.
I'm going to say referring to one, uh, county line, or, uh, district line. This is accepted. In hamburg, that is, I'm saying.
And so Mr. Upchurch reviewed the one that was the higher contract, the one with the more. So I did include the other one just in case you didn't want to go that route, but they're both basically the same contract.
Mr. Upchurch, did you look at the other ones? Mr. Upchurch, did you look at the other ones, well?
They're pretty much the same, so.
Right, I've got that.
And Cumberland County did just finish and you moved off.
Who did?
Cumberland County, and I did it for their non certified personnel.
I did see a list, I had a list of folks, and I did think of the.
Yes, I, I think Cutman County did something for them also, I noticed from there.
So those together, if I'm, if I'm correct, is 29,300.
No, we would only choose one.
Oh, you'd only choose?
Yes, because what, the higher price one is for Districtwide plus non certified. And the other one is just for the supervisors and typical office.
Okay, so same, the, the Districtwide would cover every one, except the, and that's the 16,875. Sounds better that way, then.
I make a motion to approve. Uh, the 16,000 of the contract, you vote with Mr. Upchurch.
16,875?
Yes, sir, the full scope that we look at, typical office as well as non certified. Everything but, uh, teaching.
In further discussion? Clark, can we call, all please?
Mr. Bellis.
Yes.
Mr. Borin.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Frey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oates.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Say yes.
Mr. Olson, motion period, did all that math for us? Item number 14, approval of strategic plan, this department emailed that to us. Not sure of the date. Yes. We talked about strategic plan for 10 years now, and we have worked on it 30 years, and.
We get our retreat regarding strategic plan.
So I think out of that retreat, for some people, they probably don't know the work that the board put into this, but you guys came out with a vision that we will brand moving forward, and that vision will be Warrior Excellence. And then you also came up with a new mission for the district, which is to pray our students to excel and reach their full potential. And then you came up with four goals that you asked for us to come up with strategies to achieve those goals. If you don't mind, I'll go over the first goal, which would be to elevate the educational program for all students. The second goal is to improve community engagement and the parental experience. The third goal is to recruit, build, and retain excellent employees, and the fourth goal is to provide facilities that inspire and support student achievement. So under each one of those goals, you challenged us to come up with strategies that we thought could achieve those goals, and those are the strategies that we've listed in this document under the five year strategic plan. The other thing that I would say is that this is a living document, and as we complete things, we can add other things under those particular goals, so it doesn't just stop because we've, we've been able to complete the things that are listed. And so I think that's a big piece of this, and that a piece that people need to understand is, yes, we are dreaming big within our five year plan, but we can continue to dream big, and as we accomplish things, we can add more strategies to this plan.
So the objectives and strategies were developed by yourself, the administration staff, and the teachers to lead the system.
The, so the way that we did this is that central office staff got together, we put together our strategies, and then for the last month, I have been visiting schools, meeting with parents, I've met with teachers, and I've also met with students. We have distributed this to those groups, and we've asked for feedback. We didn't hear anything back from any of those groups as to anything that they wanted to see changed, or anything that they wanted to see added. So this was a big piece of why I met with them, but I also met with them just to find out what ideas that they had through their particular schools. And we received a lot of feedback through those meetings, a lot of positive feedback, some changes that they wanted to see happen at our schools, some of those things we've already been working on. I told Mr. Borin, we had an open teaching position, and one of the things that our students and our teachers at our elementary schools asked us for was an art teacher. So we hired two art teachers, we had one position posted for middle school, and out of those meetings, I thought, well, we have an open teaching position, let's get an art teacher for our elementary schools that will rotate through the three. So that gives our elementary students that opportunity to start with their passions in art. So it, it was a great learning experience for me to be able to interact with each one of those groups, and we were able to push out this document and allow them to be the first ones to see it as a draft.
Part of the process that we're to use in your evaluation is to use this as how we're moving through the, on a manual basis, achieving those strategies for the objectives and goals?
Yes.
Back to the state mandate, is that not correct?
We'll use the evaluation to administrate people, partially mess up this.
Central office staff? Yes, we will, we'll, as we push out, and a lot of things that we're doing, we've already begun.
We'll have a lot of, we'll be having a lot of new things as far as our relationships with supervisors and people.
Yes.
Send that in the email, Mr. Department, even though that's only for 18.
And I appreciate all the work you and all the staff, and, and, you know, engaging parents, engaging other people, I think is a great idea. It was a very good retreat that we had, I thought, and I'd like to see this come out there, I appreciate that. And I think I've been through organizations that kind of, was new, I won't say we're new to a strategic plan here, but the fact that we need to make sure it's a living, breathing document, and as, get updates on it, and as things around us change, this could change, as we accomplish things, they'll change. And hopefully, what I've seen in my other life is that when you start making these strategic plans, and start seeing successes, and everybody else joins in the next time you discuss it, and say, well, let's do this then, let's see how the benefit of it, it's just hard to kind of get it started, keep it going in that direction. But I appreciate the efforts, and we'll try our best to keep it going in that direction.
Well, I think that now that we have a plan, our focus can be centered around this. So our conversations seem to be focused on the work that you guys did at that retreat. Yes, we came up with the strategies, but the goals were the work of the board, right? Those are things that you really wanted to focus on. So in all the conversations, in the way that we spend money, everything needs to be focused back to the strategic plan.
Yeah, and that gives direction all the way down the chain of employees, that everything that I'm doing needs to be meeting one of these, needs to be helping meet one of these goals. So that just, it makes it clear for everybody, everybody kind of hopefully pulling in the same direction.
Yes, and once you guys decide if this is what you want and you approve it, then we will post it on our website for the rest of the community to be able to see, so that they know what our goals are as a district as well.
Can you put an ad option on it?
Yes.
And will you, you will give us updates, I know, or if we, you know, as board members, if we have questions, I would kind of advise us to reach out to this department, see where we're at, specific items, something that interests, you know, piques our interest. Well, I hadn't heard anything about this, you know, if we, we, we'll reach out to you if you check on it, I'm assuming. But we need to, the board need to make sure that we continue to ask her about this.
Does it achieve a goal or objective in the strategic plan?
Well, and I hope too, that as we are able to accomplish certain things, just like we've put up pictures of playgrounds and other things that the board has been able to accomplish, I hope as we go through these and accomplish each one of these strategies that on our website, we're able to document that they were accomplished, so that when people pull it up, that they can see the work that has been done. Because this is a joint effort, it's not just my effort, it's this board's effort, it will be our staff's effort throughout the district as well.
Very good, thank you.
I've seen you be on a roll, I make a motion to approve.
I'll stick.
Further discussion? On the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you, motion period. Item number 15, policy review for the following, these are the ones that are on annual, is that correct, Mr. Olson?
Yes.
These are the ones for annual, and I think, Mr. Department, you've had some close, look at these.
Mr. South, it's look at these, these are all on agent, pardon.
And I think, Mr. Grant, if you have any question, I think you looked at all these. You don't see anything deeply changing in any of those, correct? I make a motion to approve these five policies together.
I'll stick.
Thank you, Mr. Frey. Any discussion on these five policies? All the papers, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Thank you, motion period. Item number 16, policies with T S V A updates. Say one of those, Mr. Department, do you have recommendations on them? Mr. Upchurch, do you have a few?
I have some significant recommendations, starting with policy 6.4081.
That goes on, sir?
Yes. A lot of recent events, and that policy touches upon what could be similar events. We need to strengthen that policy just a little bit. Except there was, that, that was a tragedy, obviously, there's going to be blame spread around numerous individuals and entities. There'll be more victims, victims being teachers and police officers and what have you, based upon court of public opinion, of course of law. But I, I, I would like to add some language to that with your permission.
If there's no objection to that, I'll ask Mr. Upchurch to take a look at the policy and come back to that again.
The other one is policy 5.200, separation practice. I just, I just litigated that very policy dating from a teacher that was suspended, and I located some inconsistencies in the policy of that school system similar to, to these. Gave me a valid argument, kept the school system wrapped up in litigation for about six months. So I, I would like to go back and look at my research in that case, and suggest possibly some changes to this policy. That's 5.200.
5.200?
Uh. Separation practice for teacher, teachers.
But there's no objection on that, we know.
5.20, excuse me, 5.200, 5.201, both of them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out.
If there's no objection, I will ask Mr. Upchurch to review those as well. Mr. Grant, do you have anything on official exams, did you score any there?
I didn't, I actually liked it better than the other one, because it talks about a religious abandonment function, and I liked it better than the other.
Mr. Junior, I've got more on that. Need one, add a recommendation, add one. Mr. Brown? Good, take a look at that. Mr. Junior? Senior from those. You good with T S V A recommendation? Uh, tenure? Teacher, tenure? Mr. Department, what's your recommendation?
Uh, recommend that we should.
Uh, regulation requirement, 40605, do you have anything on that, do you want to see these adjustments?
Um, I think that there was, I guess, that Mr. Johnson and them had put some, it was behind the policies, the thing that makes you get from that one.
Some paper, 130. Did we get an email on that, or just included in this?
It was included, and, and we can have that.
So, I don't think 130, if everyone's looking at it, I'm not asking Mr. Upchurch to take that in as well, and include that, if, if it were to be approved, that would be the great, I'm a court of. Uh, look at recommendations that the. 24 games of credit versus 22.
I can find that if you can.
Would you come up?
Yeah.
Everything else appears to be the same, but that.
It's pretty much the same, the difference is the state does have 22 credits, but two of those are half credits that they require. We don't do half credit courses at the high school, so P E, they only require half credit. We don't do half credit, so it's a full credit for us, so that's the difference between the 22 and the 24. Whereas the state requires some half credits, we only do those as full credits. So personal finance, U S government, economics, and P E, the state says you only need half a credit of, we do full credits in all of those. And then we do have that, I think it was point six, was added on there about the electives. So there are a number of electives that students have to take in addition to the required courses. And that can change based on what our master schedule is. Like, right now, we're going from a six period day to a five period day next year, so the number of credits a student can get, so that will change. Right now, students, this year's class had a credit count of 33 total, with the nine credits on top of the required. It's kind of like when you go to college, you have your major core classes that they require, and then you have elective credits on top of that that they also require, ours is kind of the same way, we think about it that way. So next year, that will actually come out to about 30, because we're, we're changing our main schedule from six period day to a five period day. So that elective count will change, could change every year, but that is change, is included in our board, or in our annual. It would never increase on students. But a senior right now, we wouldn't come back and say, you've got to have 36 credits.
So back to the 24 versus 22?
Yes.
Can a student graduate here with 22 credits?
No, not unless they have transferred to us as a senior, but because we offer so many credits, they would still have 22, but they'd have over 22 credits. And I say that because I do have some students that may transfer as a senior, where they were, they were coming into us half a credit in P E. They've met the state requirement as a half credit, but they take other classes, they'll, they'll still have over 22.
Based on this, they have to make 24?
Honestly, right now, I don't have anybody that has less than probably 27 credits.
All right, I understand, but.
I see what you're saying, I mean, you can have that as 22.
What's the advantage of making it 24?
It's just, it's just clarifying what we do, we don't offer half credits, so if you're saying, if, if somebody's with us from ninth grade to 12th grade, they come with, come to us, we don't do half credit in P E, personal finance, econ, or government. So those students are taking full credit. Yes, those are all state required, the state says you only need half credit of them, we do not offer them in a half credit format.
Why do we not offer a half a credit? Why do we not offer those more classes with a half credit? Probably the.
I mean, I don't know how they get the full credit with P E.
Well, the way our schedule is, we're on a block schedule, so the majority of our classes.
Are we going to be on block schedule, don't you?
Yes, we still are. So the majority of our classes run from December, or August to December, and then January through May, those are two different ones. So from, if you're in a class from August to December, you get a full credit of it. So to get half credit, it means that class has to be a non-rent class, and so we just don't do the non-rent classes.
But they could shift, if, if we weren't doing that, we could be offering another half credit of something, that might be of interest or value.
Possibly, yes.
Like a half-credit in PE and a half-credit in whatever else the state requires us to do.
Or the interest of the student would benefit them as they left the system.
Yep.
So Cindy, I have a question.
Yes.
Of course, I'm, I'm new to y'all's system, so...
Sure.
This is just me coming from another place, and I think that we did it, doesn't make, the way you do it wrong.
Exactly.
Since I'm not used to it. So I understand, like, if we're on a block for math or English, and we're trying to give them those credits, like geometry in the fall, algebra two maybe in the spring, that those would be given as full credits. But if we offered government, why could it not go from August till December and be a half a semester class, and then them take econ from January to May, and that be a half semester class? Why does it have to be...
Well, they, they take that, I mean, you could give them a half-credit for that, I mean, you could. We give them a full credit for it, because if you're taking marketing during that time, or if you're taking Tennessee history during that same timeframe, it's a full credit.
So I, I just want everybody to kind of understand, because I think I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
So where most people are giving a half a credit from August to December for econ, and then another half a credit for government the second semester, they're doing the same thing. Here, they're just getting a full credit for it, for going from that time.
Yes, so some other systems, they may be year-long. All their classes are year-long. So they'll take US government in the fall, they'll take econ in the spring, they get half-credit for each. So some systems do it that way. Some systems do non-week blocks, so they'll do econ for nine weeks and government for nine weeks. Our previous teacher that taught that said, I can't cover everything, I really need to cover nine weeks for US government and for economics. So we never made that switch. With PE, you could do a PE, personal finance, but at this point, it would do a lot of juggling and transitioning to do that, because we have a lot of students that's already had PE, a lot of students already have personal finance, or they've only had one of them. If I put them in PE, where are they going to go after, because they may have already had personal finance? So just being a transitioning to do that, um, we have just never really offered those half-credit classes. I mean, I, when I was here, we didn't do it, and we just never incorporated it.
Somebody comes in with a half-credit of...
Yeah. If they come in and they've met that requirement, uh, if they don't want to take PE again, the way I look at it when I'm evaluating that transcript is they've met the state requirement, and we'll pull an elective that will serve them better for whatever they want to do when they leave school.
And they could take that from January to May?
Yeah.
They just get a full credit.
They just get a full credit, exactly, yeah.
I just thought it was like coming in and transferring, having twenty-two credits, if everything they're supposed to have, and us saying they can't grab it.
I would never do that to a student. Well, but what I'm saying is, with, with that twenty-four, I guess the way I look at that is you're making, you can word that by credits, or you could word that by courses. And I think by courses would make it more clearly. You meet the twenty-two courses that the state requires. That way, it doesn't matter if I say it's a half a credit or a full credit. It doesn't matter if you transfer to me with a half-credit, you've met that course requirement the state's...
So the state speaks in courses, not credits?
Oh, they speak in both.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the...
I see what you're saying.
...advantage to having twenty-two in there is.
Mr. Smith?
We talked about students moving in, what, what happens with our student that moves somewhere else? And then that system counts a half-credit, and our student, had he stayed here, would have gotten a full credit. Does that put them unable to graduate with the school they moved to?
Well, one, I can't answer for every school system, because I'm not there. But if a student is with us, they have exceeded that requirement, so it would not penalize them.
If the receiving school is going to only give them a half a credit?
Now, I will say, when, when a school system, when, and, and I'll speak as, as school counselors across the state, because I do speak to those school counselors. When I receive a, a transcript from another school, it doesn't matter if only, if, if they were with us, they get a, a credit of PE. If they earned a half a credit at that school, that's what goes on their tran, their transfer transcript. So if they had a credit from us of PE, when they transfer to that school, that school enters it as a full credit of PE.
Okay, that's, that's... The gist of my question is, will that student going there thinking they have a full credit be received by that receiving school only giving them one half-credit?
They won't give them a half-credit. They will give them whatever credits they go to that school with, regardless of what their, if they attended at their school, would have gotten.
I think on this one, I would like to table this one for, come out to that meeting and ask Mr. Parkman, give a fair vote, and then I'm sure for a chat, or bring it back to do it. If there's no objection, then we'll get a motion again to...
What's it gonna, what would it change? I mean, twenty-two, twenty-six, uh, twenty-four, it's not changing a thing. I mean, there's still no graduating with X amount.
They'll, they'll graduate with X amount. I see Mr. Billings' point, if we say twenty-four credits, I, looking, thinking of it that way, because I come into it thinking a little bit different way a lot of times. Uh, I would change that to courses instead of credits, but that's just me. That's kind of fashion of TSBA policy, TSBA says credits.
And that would be twenty-two courses?
And it would be, right, twenty-four credits, twenty-two courses, so...
Well, that is a little player, a little bit of player.
Yeah.
Is this one, are we, the change, are you asking to change it to twenty-four instead of twenty-two?
Well, that's what, because of, we're, credit-wise, we do twenty-four credits.
Right, but, but we're asking...
And that's what I was, and it was...
To change it to twenty-four?
Yes.
Why?
But because of the way that we deal with credits versus courses, we don't do half-credits, we do...
I understand that.
And that's what's getting her to twenty-four.
I understand that, but what does it, what's twenty-two versus twenty-four? Uh, it just makes us look bigger. Uh, but yet they still got twenty-two.
I think it's a matter of fi, trying to figure out a scenario where it is a difference, and we're not sure yet.
But I think, and I think too, what you, you need to realize that you, I don't know that you've fully grasped, is that on top of that, we require electives. So really, you're looking at, this year was thirty-three credits, next, starting next year will be about thirty total credits.
Right, so I like the idea of saying, well, the state requires twenty-two, but we, we graduate from, that's okay, high school, you have...
You have thirty.
Thirty-two, or thirty, or it's...
Or more, I mean...
Yeah, but we, it's not that we require it, but that's what you'll have, so I, I mean, I don't understand the big...
I mean, because our state is really on the new schedule, so a freshman coming in on this new schedule that we're, we're going to start. Uh, they could potentially have, like, thirty-seven credits when they graduate. If they didn't fail anything at all, they took everything that they should take, they could have thirty-seven. We require thirty, because you're going to have students that fail classes and repeat classes, so you can't say every kid has to have thirty-seven credits, because then as soon as you fail a class, that kid can graduate. So we have that to ensure.
See, I guess maybe, maybe I'm just not on the wavelength here.
But if you say...
You're asking, you're asking for us to change it in our policy to twenty-four credits, when the state requires twenty-two, is that correct?
Twenty-two credits.
What's the purpose, why?
I was just trying to make sure that, that people understood that it doesn't equal twenty-two credits for us. It equals twenty-four credits for us.
Right.
But we may, like I said, changing credits to courses would make it clearer, I think.
They're taking, they're taking the same number of courses...
Leave it twenty-two.
At twenty-two, and say, and getting twenty-four credits with us, because, because we give one credit where everybody else gives a half.
So instead, make it twenty-two courses. It was twenty-two credits, make it twenty-two courses instead of the credits. And I think that clears it, however, it says credits on the TSBA policy. So I don't know if you want to get into that because of the TSBA...
Should we do a draft, if you could get that out?
And the other question is, if we're putting twenty-two or twenty-four in this policy, and we require thirty, where is that in the policy?
The thirty comes into that additional credits on that line six, I believe it's six that I added. And I didn't say a specific number, because that was, again, going to be more of a discussion, this was recommendations only.
I still don't know what, why we're asking, what the purpose of...
For the additional electives?
Are we asking to change our policy to twenty-four, is that what you're...
Okay. It was originally, that's okay, it was originally twenty-two. That's what the original policy, yes, in the, in the original, in the current policy, it says twenty-two. When I was given this to review, I knew overall, we don't require twenty-two, we require thirty-three, honestly, okay? So, but the state, some of those who are not state require courses, that are elected courses. So I'm thinking, okay, yeah, twenty-two credits, but we require this twenty, we offer it as twenty-four credit. That's why I was thinking in that format, because that's how we offer this, because we don't have the half-credit.
What purpose does it bring to change it in the policy?
We do not have to change it, I was just trying to make it clear. I, I'm not dead, I, I mean, tied to, I want it this way. I was just trying to make it clear that those Tennessee courses, you're actually getting twenty-four credits and not just twenty-two.
Good, I like that, but I would say...
Yeah, but you don't have to change, I don't care if you change it in the policy or not. That doesn't affect me really.
I would still watch the tableism, and Mr. Parkman, look at the purple, and, and, and bring it back.
Yeah, because I don't like the idea of them having to have thirty credits.
Yeah, I would like to look at that whole thing, but we've had a few discussions.
Well, I'll keep in mind the reason for that is, it's two, so one, if you lessen that, they could graduate three years, theoretically. Then you lose funding on the student program.
And also too, why are we on nine-week blocks instead of not a six weeks like it's, it had always been?
It's been nine-week blocks since I've been here.
Yeah, but it ain't been nine weeks, obviously.
I, I'm just saying, it's been nine weeks since I've been here, so I haven't...
Okay, is that something that the state changed, that we had to go on nine-week blocks instead of a six weeks period?
Uh, like I said, I, this was my thirteen-year, it was nine weeks.
In other words, you're doing the whole year of classes, not a half year.
I think that the, the reason a lot of schools went to the semester for a year is that we had students who were failing courses, so if you took geometry for an entire year...
Okay.
You didn't have opportunity to make that up until the next year, and you still had another math class to take too. So if you could offer, and you can jump in at any time, I'm wrong on this, but if you could offer geometry for first semester and they failed it, they still had opportunity to take it second semester. So it didn't throw kids off track, where you had to retain them in summer school or even at the end so they can graduate.
So in the second semester, they're not required to take that other math class.
They have to have, they, yeah, they have to have four math classes to graduate.
Right.
But the thinking for a lot of people was that if a kid went geometry, they're, let's say they're sophomore...
Sophomore year.
They would have to retake that either in summer school, or they would have to take it their junior year.
Right.
Well, there might not be enough places for them to take it if we're on a traditional schedule, because they'd have to take algebra two as well.
Right.
And so it allows them, if they fail it first semester, to take it second semester. And if you know of another reason, you can jump in, but that was always mine. And it helps with scheduling, just to be honest, yeah.
So we have to have four math, and we have to have four English, and what else do we have to have to translate?
Three science.
You have to have... Four, um, specific social sciences. PE, personal finance, wellness, and then you have...
So they don't, they don't put PE and wellness together?
No, those are two separate courses.
So it's four math, four English, three science, and it specifies what sciences. Three social studies credits, including US history, geography, world history, um, and geography, US government, civics, and economics. Fiscal education, one of us, which is one and a half credits. Half-credit personal finance, two credits foreign language, which can be waived. One credit fine arts, and then three, um, credits consisting of career, technical, or advanced placement, or IB, that's like your program study.
What is the one credit for fine arts? Is that like an art class or something?
It can be general me, for us at the high school, it's general music, piano, guitar, musical theater, um, concert choir, band, any of those.
Okay.
It's the fine art. The fine art and the, uh, foreign language can be waived, but in lieu of those credits, you would have to take additional in your program of study. So if welding was your program of study, you'd have to take three, if you didn't want to do your fine art and your Spanish.
Do you have to have an foreign language?
It can be waived if you, it is a graduation requirement, but if you want to waive it, you can, but you have to take additional, uh, focus of study. So if you didn't want to take your Spanish one and Spanish two, and you're welding focused, you would take five welding classes instead of three welding classes.
Okay. Uh, I'm on the same page now.
Yeah.
I just saw that used to be summer school fills up.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't offer summer school here, so it's just a recommending. We, we try to find, yeah, we try to find places that they could go or online, uh, accredited places they could take it online.
Okay, I got it, Neil.
Okay, on, uh, next one, four, two zero five enrollment on college level courses.
We also need, we also need to look at that, because I'm not sure that that matches what our, um, handbooks does.
What's that one, just next one?
The, the policy that...
Yes, that change, would, would have to change our handbook as well to the line of... That is correct. Because the current policy is nothing like the new TSBA recommendations, so you have, that would have to...
Do you have anything on that, on your own, on college level courses? Uh, four up, two zero five? Uh, can you on page one thirty-six?
Uh, Ms. Johnson, you're, I think that's changed to one thirty-nine, the change in recommendations. Oh, I, I'll have it with me, I don't know what any college has...
What is that on page one thirty?
Oh, I can look at it, but...
Recommendations for the...
Yes, I did have recommendations, I said it's regrouped.
I would, I would like to table that one as well, to look at, and you can add some other recommendations in that, uh, policy format, and then back to the...
I think the other piece, um, if you go back to, and, and I just noticed, is if you go back to the prior one that we were discussing, and I forgot what the number was, it also has that language thing. Did we add this about the early graduation piece?
Ready graduate is in there, because that is state law with the ready graduate. I do know with the new funding policy that's coming out, that's going to, we thought we had a way, but the new funding, my understanding is that the student leaves, money leaves with the student.
Okay, let's talk about that, because I haven't seen that yet, I only know about what they had previously told us.
That's what I had heard in a, uh, for a CTE.
Okay, okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so what I have on the policies, uh, six dot four zero eight one, Mr. Trump, church to review. Uh, six dot four zero two fiscal exam, uh, Ms. Ryan's recommends we approve that as eight. Five dot two zero zero, Mr. Trump, church to review. Five dot one one seven, teacher tenure, uh, recommendation is to approve as is from TSBA. Five dot two zero one, separation practices, Mr. Trump, church to review. Four dot six zero five and four dot two zero five, uh, table until July, and Parkman, you use those for staff, and then, uh, bring it back.
Good.
I'd make a motion to approve six point four zero two and five point one one seven, that's recommended. Thank you.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Paul. So we'd only be approving of, is the, uh, is the, any further questions for discussion on this? All the papers say aye. Can you oppose? I have number seventeen, approval contract with KBJM. Uh, Mr. Trump, I reviewed that, and he sent us a letter this afternoon, Mr. Trump, if you want to discuss that?
I, I had reviewed it, perhaps, a month or six weeks ago. I prepared the piece later, and it basically suggested four changes. Uh, the architects agree to those changes with the exception of the language regarding additional compensation. That was not negotiable from their standpoint. And it, essentially, they, they explained what they meant by the language. And essentially, if they have to submit additional bids over and beyond the base bid, a bid, additional matters, not included in the project, it provides for compensation for that. Without those alternative or additional bids, the compensation that's set forth in the, uh, contract is the only compensation that will, uh, be paid to them. And that, that satisfied, maybe that clarified what they were attempting to say in that particular provision. Looked like there was, there was quite a bit of discretion on their part to, uh, perform work that perhaps would not be approved by us, and then submitted under that additional bid language, but that, that's not the purpose of it, so I, I'm, I'm satisfied with it. So I'm, I'm satisfied with it. Contract has amended and our recommendation will be to be approved.
Okay, and this contract is for, as I said on the front, new restroom concession building and a new softball hitting facility located at the Ken Mills. At our meeting last month, the recommendation was made to Mr. Morris, and I was hoping he would be here. To put a locker room back into the, we had a sketch, if you will, to put the locker room back into the building with the restrooms and concessions. That was Mr. Villas' recommendation and I was hoping that would be the idea. Must have been some miscommunication on that because Mr. Morris didn't make that happen. He sent an email yesterday or he was, with same sketch. So I sent him an email asking him to do that and to come back with that sketch, so we could look at square footage on that. I'll bring it forward today, figure out who's a part of this architectural review and costly. And there was another thing that came.
Discussion would be using Katz Binkley's hourly rate and doing an hourly contract for their work. Now let's move on through this because I don't know how they're going to predict dealing with that amount of administrative requirements at the current percentages that they've got set in the contract.
And I understand it can't work for free either. Well, even if the labor was donated, that doesn't mean that his work would be done. Because he's going to have the same amount of work to do, correct?
I would think in this case, they're going to have a little bit more because they're going to need to, I guess we're gonna, the process is going to be a general contractor, we still have a G C bonded. Those bids, the subcontractors to the G C would be bonded as well, but they may have a reduced rate for their labor.
Or construction manager.
As a, well, what do we, what's our project delivery then? Would probably need that specified in the agreement, was how procurement's going to be.
Because if you go after a bid and they would just bid, it's the labor that be donated, correct? Is that how that would?
Well, what they would do, let's, let's say the drawings were done and it was out to bid. Ideally, the way you would structure it is, let's say the, there's electrical. We use that example, it's all electrical for the facility. Electrical contractors would provide their bids to, or subs would provide their bids to G C or C M if you wanted to do it that way. And they're going to go ahead and bond and provide bonding, whatever, to the prime, the subs would, but they may have a discounted rate. It may be, you know, five dollars an hour. They're still providing all the assurances, but they're donating, you know, they're going to donate your labor. Their, their bid to the prime, sub's bid to the prime's going to be substantially less because the labor may or may not be donated, or maybe proceeded to the labor be donated. That's the way I would do it and you're still covered.
Yes, I like that idea.
You're still covered financially and through the bonding because the G C's going to have a bond and the G C's going to want a bond with subs. And so there's some costs there, but you're gonna have, should have some savings from the labor. If within the communities, those contractors, within those specific trades are truly going to be able to provide a reduced, alright, right? That still provide materials.
If they bid, you will, if they bid, they're responsible just like someone who gets paid.
Correct, but their bid, let's say, let's say Andy's bid might be a hundred thousand on electrical. Mr. Snow's giving his labor, his, his might be forty thousand because he's just covering his material with bonding and all that stuff.
But it's still an acceptable bid. Maybe that, and it has to meet the same requirement.
These are all licensed individuals and all those kind of things, so.
Well, for instance, like TCAT, I have a question, like TCAT's probably not going to bid at any general contractor. But is it something where the school system can purchase the materials for them? So TCAT works, TCAT won't put in a bid, you know what I'm saying? So we would not, TCAT's saying they will provide the material, which the general contractor purchased the materials in. That's how we want to do it, but I just didn't know how, because TCAT's not going to go to the general contractor and put in a bid. They're just saying, they will donate the labor to do the work, but they need the materials on site. So how are we going to procure the materials for them to have to work? That would be my question.
And just have multiple primes.
Yeah, whatever tax can make that work, because if we pay for materials, there's no tax.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a big thing.
How's the G C going to be responsible for TCAT's work?
So at this point, we need to get Mr. Morris to come up with the drawing.
So how would, for instance, if there's a failure in the wall, and we go back to Katz Binkley, and then we also go back to the general contractor to deal with that failure in the wall, the general contractor has no recourse to TCAT that I can do. And they're probably going to want it. So that structure might not work. Meaning you might go to a construction manager and have multiple primes.
Yes, and that's what we had discussed before with Mr. Morris.
But he doesn't do construction management.
He does not, that is correct.
So would have to hire a C M to take his drawings and then do, receive multiple subcontractor bids, which is fine. I mean, all that standard process as well.
I mentioned another business that did that, but there was no acceptance of that.
Let's follow with something that would work. So we would need to, one, move forward with those drawings, okay, get that part done. We need a, we need a budget, an opinion of probable cost, and we need a full plan with the square footage for us to approve and all of us agree to that budget so that we're not caught, and we understand it potentially would be in that range, hopefully less, but that we're not caught, oh wait, we've got another nice set of drawings and none of us knew it was going to be eight hundred thousand dollars.
But this, this contract is, we sound, is the drawings?
The issue with this contract currently is, I guess we could go ahead, what's the seven percent based off of?
Right, I don't understand that.
Is it going to be based off their opinion of probable cost and their square foot price, which is.
I don't understand if that's what he told us, but I understand what you're saying, it's not embarrassing.
So the, the, because we don't have that O P C yet, we kicked around some numbers. Do we do it off of that opinion of probable cost from the architect, which is fine? Or do, is, is it generally off of what the bid number would be? But in this case, the bid number has potentially to be lower and maybe slightly unfair of Katz Binkley if then the community steps in with their labor.
Right, but if people were to do it like you said before on the hourly rate, then it's not going to be, it's not going to affect either way we do it. If we hire a construction manager, then they would be taking it.
Right, but his, his percent of construction may not, it potentially, has the construction cost has potential to be way lower than what we expected. If he's okay with that.
Right, and, and that's why I hope he's somewhere.
I would think that, um, he's probably waiting on the contract, he's been working for quite a while.
Yeah.
Um.
But we did offer the last meeting to enter into hourly.
I would think you could go hourly with this and probably move through it pretty quickly. And then you could often take the hourly rate and compare it proportionalized later and see, we'll see it within reason, I'm sure it will be.
And that's what we were doing, from what I'm on the work he's done. I think that hourly till we get to the point to.
Well, this would be hourly for a set of construction documents. And then you would select the construction manager who would then take over the project at that point with some reviews by the architect. But the C M would be running the job, taking the bids, managing the bidding process, then managing the construction schedule and the subs. And the, the, so make this even more complicated. Once the C M is hired, I'm sorry, once the C M is hired, there's two ways to go. Is to have those multiple prime contracts from all the subcontractors. In other words, the electrical contractor has a contract with the board, the plumber has a contract with the board, and that's probably the way to go. Or you could take all of those subcontractors and bind them together to the C M. So it's called C M at risk at that point. What we want is the C M with multiple primes because we've got TCAT coming in and we're going to have a schedule that's just, when I can get to it, I'll give you notice and, yeah.
Well, like Mr. Morris was talking about, that would be the matrix, they have to.
The C M's going to take all that, it would no longer be Mr. Morris's issue.
Right, but it would be, it would follow the same thing, they would still have to.
Oh, the C M will handle all the scheduling and have some flexibility there with TCAT and whoever. And this, I mean, this project could go on for a little bit, but it would get done and probably be reasonably affordable. But I think we need a budget from Mr. Morris that treats it as if it were a hard bid from the G C. Because we don't know how much savings we're going to have.
Can I ask a very, this is a, this is a very anonymous question. With this project, there's a lot that's been, I don't know how well I've followed. But this and others in the future, what is the logistics of hiring a project manager with a, with a license of Lloyd buyer school? Being that this is what the project, we have got facilities that, that's all the time needing updated, fixed, projects to grow, that, that can make this real simple, that can sit up for us and say, have all the, have all the Ps and Qs and Is dotted and rated and say, this is it. This is how much it's going to cost, and we can bring him our visions, him, her, whoever.
I think we have, Mr. Turner, for facilities maintenance and those, you know, pretty good sized projects. And, and what we've done is we're entering into capital improvements that are moving beyond that daily operation. And we've taken on a set of risks with a new structure. In other words, if we have a failure in the wall, who are we going to assign that failure, that wall to?
I understand.
So we're shifting risk. And we, I think in construction and the industry, you're always talking about how risk gets spread around. And when you spread that risk around, you have an increase in cost because we're, all those entities are sharing that risk. Does that make sense?
I understand.
And that's why we're probably consulting outside of the system itself is to shift the risk away from the board and the system, use some of our money to help do that and so that there's accountability from other professions and trades.
It's just like we're running around in so many circles, and I'd like to see something.
Well, we're either going to run around in circles or we're going to come up with substantial amounts of money to meet the budgets. Because there are cleaner ways to do it. The clean way to do it is design it and bid it and fund it and pay over bill and go. And we've had that option, we didn't like it. Well, one, we were introduced, the way we got here, we were introduced in a budget that wasn't feasible or reasonable at the time it was presented and nor at the time that it was received from bids. So there was, at best misleading, budget numbers for this, for the facility we had designed. And we probably needed to be three to five hundred thousand above what would the opinion of probable cost was at that time.
And my, I understand, I understand all that. We can't afford the, the numbers that was given to us.
I don't think we were prepared for it.
Prepared for it?
Yeah.
And so we're looking for the, for the way to be the best steward of what we have.
Yes, sir.
So in doing that, there's been some things done. And maybe, and like I said, this is kind of, this is very novice. I don't claim to know what I'm doing, but I see the other things get done and this just getting.
I think we're close, what, what, I think we're real close, I think we.
What we need to do here.
Set an hourly rate for a contract, make sure that we all understand what our project delivery method's going to be. Apparently, it's going to be a construction manager with multiple primes. And the construction manager's going to manage those bids and receive those and draft the contracts for each one of those for, for review by Mr. Upchurch, put them under contract, that construction manager will set the schedule and we go. But right now, we need, one, an hourly contract potentially from Katz Binkley. Two, we need a floor plan that has a square footage number and an opinion of probable cost.
Which Katz Binkley.
Under an hourly contract. And we probably need to give them a contract at some point. But I don't know that the contract we have really sets them up for an hourly. Because they have an hourly rate in there that may be their hourly rate. I don't know.
And, and see, I don't know if this is normally done that way. I'm talking about kind of somebody coming to your house. If you ever want to make an envy, do a job by the hour. Unless you're going to get done too fast and they're going to think you made too much money or you're going to get done slow and they're going to think you're milking it.
I mean, it's.
The hourly rate, the hourly rate's not for the construction. The hourly rate is to get us the plan and to get us the budget.
It's for the professional services, it's the, well, one, it's the floor plan with square footage, two, gives us the opinion of probable cost. If we all look at that, we go, they go to the construction documents, they hand it off to the construction manager that we're going to be fined and hired at a percentage. And then we're, we're going through that process. But there's, there's no guarantees that that process will save money.
Mr. Parkman, could I ask you, could Ken U G N, could they do a flat rate to provide drawings? If we're going to hire a construction manager, you know, once, once we get the drawings from the architect, I mean, it's not like we don't need them anymore, but if we're going to have a construction manager manage projects, we don't need architects.
We'll, we'll need a couple of reviews on some middles and things, maybe three.
But, but I, I know when we done the H V A C contracts for the G M's, they, they topped out. We just ended up doing a flat rate, just a flat rate price and then, and then going that way and then just going out with construction.
Just do a flat rate and discuss in the contract that there's going to be a construction manager that's the project delivery method with multiple primes.
Yeah. And I, and I personally think, just from what I've seen in the past on some of our calls, a construction manager will help us possibly use that donated labor and some of the other things more than a general contractor would, and that's just from my personal experience.
Because of how we're going to structure it and try to reduce the cost with local labor who have to be licensed and bonded, so we're still shifting our risk and they're going to cover that in the cost, but they're potentially going to have lower costs by providing their labor at a reduced rate and/or substantially reduced rate. Somebody's got to manage all of those entities and the construction manager.
Maybe that's not, maybe this is not the route that we need to do for this particular project, but I, maybe my thought is that I'd like to have somebody that can, if we had somebody in our school system that could, that could reach out to those, get these things to get, reach out to TCAT. Project manager, construction manager, I don't know what you call them.
That's your C M, that's your construction man. And usually what you do.
What he's saying is, who, who makes contact with you?
Um, Katz Binkley could make some references, there are several in the region. Yes, and they, they're, they tend to be very paper driven. So they're most of the time paper contractors and you will, and they, they schedule and manage all that. We're talking about a project that's going to take quite a bit of scheduling and time just in, when's TCAT here and scheduling out all the other trades along with that, who comes first, monitoring the contracts, remember we talked about materials being on site and all that kind of stuff? Managing the site to make sure it's safe, that we're following OSHA standards, all of those kind of things. That C M has that contractor responsibility to do.
I think what you're talking about is having somebody in-house. How do we get this money spent, running up a new person in-house, I guess is.
And, and we are going through a pretty heavy construction period. I don't know that we need any in-house. I think we can, different projects are going to have different delivery methods. I expect that if we move forward with the health and wellness building, I think we're probably going to discuss that at some point eventually. You know, that's a whole nother delivery, but I think it'll be design, bid, build, with the G C. And you're talking about full-time, the, all of the structure.
And it will actually be easier.
It will be, it'll go back to that method that everybody's used to. And I think we got here because we ended up, we started out with a budget that just wouldn't get the structure done.
When you go from three hundred seventy-five thousand or so to eight hundred seventy-five, something like that?
Yeah, we're five hundred thousand dollars off, I think.
That's what got us to where we're at right now.
I understand, but I'd like to hire somebody to find the best way. Right now, I mean, it's kind of, well, that's just the nature of.
That's kind of what Katz Binkley.
They're, they're looking, they're looking to make as much money as they can possibly make and we're looking to save as much money as we, as we possibly can to be good stewards. I'm just, I just wonder if maybe we can, construction manager, project manager, find somebody, an employee then, to help us be able to save, we're all on the same team.
Usually.
Have a great facility with the.
And we may need that on, on the, on the next, well, obviously we may need it on this one, but I think we can continue to talk about project delivery methods. But I think the way we got here is just a budgetary issue we're not prepared for. And so now we're trying to figure out how to fit that in there. I think we've got a clear track, we've just got to go implement it.
What is that clear track?
I think my motion would be to have Katz Binkley revise their contract to a flat fee to produce a set of construction drawings. But along with that contract, we need a floor plan with square footage and an opinion of probable cost.
So I could ask him to get those. I'm going to be looking to, for a special call meeting somewhere in June sixteen for financials. I could ask him to come back at that time.
That's a motion by Mr. Parkman, I'll second it.
She'll spell that out for, for Robertson.
Well, I feel that's a lot.
You're just telling Mr. Board to know what to ask him.
So the, the motion is to revise Katz Binkley's contract for review to a flat rate for construction documents. So, the, the motion is to revise Katz Binkley's contract for review to a flat rate for construction documents to include, along with the contract for approval, a floor plan with square footage and a formal opinion of problem cost from Katz Binkley.
Do you want to take that one? One with opinion of problem cost?
O P C, yeah, formal opinion of problem cost.
Just one, when you tell him, then make sure that, that locker room is passed.
When we look at the contract the next time, we should be a floor plan with square footage and an opinion of problem cost attached to those documents so we would know what we're agreeing with quality inside. But he's done a lot of footwork and it's time to get him in the contract.
Yes, I agree.
I got a feeling he might show up next year.
Who would be the contractor to show up, right?
I know he is. I've got a feeling he may be pulling on Little School door next week. Most of Mr. Farmer and. Did you second that, Mr. Brooks?
I did.
She was curious, I thought she was seconding him. And I would ask him to, on June sixteenth, if we refer that meeting. It's not going to cost us any money to move forward here at this point, next meeting you will. Uh, Mr. Roberts, you can call a role on that.
Mr. Allen, please.
Yes.
Floyd.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Freddie.
Yes.
Is that, yes. Maurice?
Yes.
Seven S's.
If Mr. Roberts motion carries, I will be holding him tomorrow. I'll send it to you in the morning, as far as that. I'm number eighteen, Director's Evaluation, and that document is in your packet. I think it's the one in here we're considering, it's the same one we've used for three years, four years, maybe. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Farmer.
I think three, four, five.
I think Mr. Snow was on the committee that reviewed this, that was as low as it was due. Uh, we did have a document to use in that evaluation. Now, the first evaluation by our director might be a little bit of a. There's a round more, you go start somewhere, I'll look at next year. That could be a little, a little different. Yes, that is correct, hundred day plan. And that will be mentioned in this evaluation, I'm sure, anytime we do it. So, looking at this document, we're, we're going to use that document again. What is that particular about, June thirty? I mean, you told me that, sorry, I just want to make sure I knew. You need a motion for that document. Pardon? Yes, I need a motion. I'll make that motion. I'll thank you. Mr. Freddie, I'm sorry, Maurice. I'll do it, we're going to do the table now. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
What, after this?
Yes.
Discussion.
Okay.
If, if there's open matter negative, but you want to make an evaluation. In the past, we have been requested to explain why there's a double evaluation.
Yes, I mean, I would love to know what you want to move work on.
What was the number two?
Two, it was three or below.
Three or below.
Good, could we? Last time, I think, it was.
You can only be a one, two, five.
Two, one or two, then we had to pass two, that I think sometimes that explanation wasn't provided. And because two of them's going to work for improvement, let's make that clear now, if that's what we want to do.
Who would you, who would you want?
Oh, I would love to have feedback.
At?
One or two.
Well, one or two, I would expect there to be some feedback, you're one or two. I'm at three.
But.
Anything below that?
I would say, yeah, below three, three or below.
And those, would you put that in your motion?
Yes.
If you're below, then three, three or below. That's true. You can say one, two. That's good. All in favor of this document for evaluation and three or less for comment, say aye. Any opposed? If she carries, thank you. Inside cover of your, this is, this documentation, the inside, front cover of your packet. Victor Spartan is supposed to cover this for the record.
Yes, so, these are the people that we have put up for non-relect. These are our non-tenured teachers as well as our non-certified. So, just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware.
I think she sent that in an email as well, but she was asked to present that in this meeting.
Yes, it just has to be in our board minutes. So, I just wanted to let you guys be aware.
So, before we put motion to adjourn, Mr. Phillips. We get set a special call meeting for June sixteen, I think it would be June sixteen that I had a meeting. Probably going to have a couple of other things. Someone talked to me tonight about two things that wanted to be on that again, who was that?
Well, I'll be back by then, Mr. Upchurch.
I think the bird is going in, and then Mr. Turner, we do not have some bids in the morning.
Yeah, if you're going to set the meeting after June fourteenth, the H V A C bids for both Unisims are opening on June fourteenth. So, if we can add that to the special call, that will speed up the process, we can approve those bids.
It should be back to Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I guess.
And Mr. Spartan.
Yeah, it's June sixteen.
Okay, yeah, so it'll be after the bid opening, so we'll have the bids available for you guys. We'll send the bids out as soon as we open, but then we'll vote on it at sixteen, maybe that's okay.
So, I'll send out a agenda a week before, just like, for the special call. And that'd be June sixteen at six o'clock, unless you want to have a, bother that date, that the first being two weeks, or not. You want to have a call right then? Uh, July, I don't know. I'm, I'm, to Mr. Spartan, you don't have to be asked. Looking meeting date for?
July.
July, I guess.
About the eleventh.
The holiday, so.
Fall one, twenty. The eleventh. Have it a week late.
Yeah, yes. I know what's occurring, you're sliding. Yeah, yes. I could do it later, anyone have a problem, July eleven?
I'll put direction, that's on the call table.
Hold it for the time.
Be five thirty for a plan session, six o'clock, regular meeting.
I'm good. Thank you, birthday.
Anytime.
So, my.
Thank you. Back in motion with adjournment. Thank you. Sorry. Have a second? I'll second now.